What's the voice?
Are you using?
The fact that I said some background and people in public for which is sense. One nation, other god. It's not just me.
And was three, there's the agenda.
Um, I would like to have a discussion, maybe a couple items.
Yeah.
Was to be know. Do you know range of consent agenda? It's made H sixteen. In H six C, then like G six two.
See here, pretty. Have a motion to approve of the changes also. I did it. All those in favor, please say that.
Hi.
Oath. Number four, public comment?
Okay. I am Kristen Smith, a teacher here at the high school in this department. And I am also the pastor of the M D S B J U soda, um, also member rights advocate.
Um, we will still needs teacher here. And I am also a member rights advocate with. Um, we are here to speak with you about the policies on the agenda this morning. And I want to speak, I wanted to just read email that was sent out to you all last night. Um, regarding policy five ninety gender identity. Um, we have a number of serious concerns regarding this proposal, mostly, most importantly, how it will impact our students. As well as its legality, we have a number of questions. One subsection one purpose states, this policy outlines I S E six ninety stance on gender identity, affirming its commitment to its foundational values while fostering respect and connection for all individuals. Where are the district's foundational values located, written, posted, found? Um, if there are indeed foundational values, when and what was discussed, presented, and then adopted as a board? Subsection two, it's written under organizational position, it says I S E six I D does not accept the ideology of transgenderism as it is contrary to our understanding of human identity and reality. And in B states, we have from that individuals are created with a biological sex that is immutable. Please clarify what and when it was discussed, presented and adopted into policy. Their position regarding the ideology of transgenderism and affirming biological care as immutable. We implore you to familiar yourselves, familiarize yourselves with the Minnesota Human Rights Act and the M D E. Uh, a toolkit for ensuring safe and supportive schools for transgender and gender nonconforming students. Uh, we want at this time that the policy would be removed indefinitely from the consent agenda and kill it from further revision or reading for adoption.
I would like to speak with you regarding policy six ninety. Uh, that policy is teaching intelligent design and evolution as explanations for our world origin. We also have a number of serious concerns regarding this proposal. Uh, most importantly on this, asking our members, our teacher team to integrate intelligent design curriculum into our Minnesota public school. Which does not support, this is a scientific theory, nor is it a part of our Minnesota standards and science. We would ask you to please consult all legal precedents against presenting I D as an alternative view to evolution. As it violates the establishment cause of the first amendment prohibiting government endorsement of religion. This is not a science. Topic, it is not. Adopted as science based. In addition, we would like you to clarify when and what was this class presented and adopted into policy. As I S D's educational philosophy, as noted in subsection six of the parental communication. We request that you remove this indefinitely from the consent agenda and no further revision or reading be presented.
I also just want to take a moment as a parent and a future to discuss, um. The district's loss of Katrina Reeves. And, um, I think a couple of you ran on teacher retention in the fall as part of your platforms for being elected as school board members. Um, but the loss of Katrina Reeves in our science department sends, um, a professional who. Uphold rigor. Um, and it will be a big hit to staff morale. So just saying and sharing my sadness about how it was handled in the district.
Uh, my name is Connor Lee and I'm here to give you a short presentation or a short speech about the technical band trips that this regional not able to be here this morning. The trip would be a four day trip to Calumus, New Michigan through Chicago from November seventh to the tenth. The musical experience we would have, we would be attending are the production of the Broadway musical, New Bird. The musical in Madison, Wisconsin, to rain the old town of school of folk music, a well known school of music just north of downtown Chicago. Tour the music department of the University of Western Michigan and play alongside the pet band for the men's hockey game against them against Denver. In addition to cheering on the Sukinsky brothers, we'd also get to do some other fun things like visit the Navy Pier and the Native Seminole in Chicago. And stay at a water park hotel in Wisconsin Nels. In the end of the year questionnaire, Mr. East will let us fill out, there were seventy students that rated their interest in this trip of five out of ten or higher. Thirty nine gave it an eight or higher. If we took a turn about the whole way, the most expensive it would be about is about six hundred fifty dollars, but it's low as four hundred eighty. Depending on how many students sign up to go. There's a lot of other information in the packets that was sent out to you about this. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Five agenda. So between personal items and. And box.
No, I would just like to say there's some heavy hitters in the restations. Said to the streets that I would think as a group, we would want to thank for all their years of service. For many different reasons, but all very important people.
Judy twenty seven, I think.
Yes. Any questions?
Judy's.
Yeah.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oath. Number six A, full time, presidential accepting donations that the F L B through these. I remember them, not a ton, but. I was going to use a couple months ago. To approve.
So moved.
Same.
Back.
After you.
Hey, I want to thank the World Area Historical Society for a thousand dollars donation towards band. American Legion Auxiliary, a hundred dollars for the band. Andrew Matson post number twenty five, a thousand dollars towards band. Liberty State Bank, a thousand dollars toward. Uh, City of Roosevelt, two hundred sixty two dollars towards band and South American Legion Squadron number twenty five. And the amount of one thousand dollars towards the band. Also want to thank Cedar Band Township for a two hundred dollar donation to Summer Rec. Marshall County Auditor Treasurer, one thousand six hundred ninety six dollars and eighty one cents towards a reflection room. Blackbird Giving Fund, uh, two hundred dollars towards the angle inlet elementary. Two hundred to three hundred dollars from Zion Lutheran Church for the Native American Education Program. Five hundred ninety five dollars from River Place towards Native American Education Program. Uh, Tweet Cup twenty twenty five, fifteen hundred dollars towards the American Education Program. And donors choose for school supplies.
Any question on those?
Um, the donations for the band, are they for the trip? They designated for anything?
Uh, I believe some of them were.
Came in at once.
That I'm not entirely sure. I know some were towards instruments that have been purchased.
You can say?
We know, but I mean, I mean, for as far as.
So that wasn't part of the topic for the top of my head, I don't know.
I know some instruments were purchased off.
I can get back to you on that speed. Well, I just might enter into the discussion about their trip, so I wasn't sure if they had been out raising funds for the trip or. Doesn't follow completely for this, I'm just curious. Thank you.
Any other questions? All those in favor, please add.
Aye.
Oath. Six B, approve extended field trip, plus this information's in the packet as well as, uh, some information from Connor there. If we will to extend a field trip to Michigan. Okay.
I'm watching.
Brenda. Marcus, Brenda, any questions?
No.
Marcus, is this something that kind of takes place every year or is it just a one off?
So the band. Many years ago, used to do extended trips. Um, every other year, I believe it was, they've not done one here, a couple that they attempted, but just never quite got off the ground. Uh, so outside of, I don't. I don't think they've done one in my. My seventh year, so my previous six years, I don't think they.
Oh, I guess I still have some questions and I don't know how long we can stretch this out because now the opinion they want to go in October, I think it's an amazing idea. But again, there's still nothing here asking what's, what's, what they're requesting from the board, is there? Did I see what they're requesting from the board? That they can go?
Correct.
Okay. And I don't think it's wrong for us to, you know, donate to a lot of other activities, so. But, you know, if, if money is going to offset these donations, offset this, or. I mean, to me, that's a lot of money to ask a parent a month after they have to. School supplies and I don't know, it's a lot all at once. I mean, it's a little fast, so. Um, I'm not opposed to approving the trip, I just. Have a little concern about. How organized it can get that quickly and the burden it could. Leave on. Parents and students, so without a lot of time to raise money, so. That's just a concern and I'm not saying I would have disproved. Giving them some money to go, I just didn't match her, what they ask is here, if the ask is just continue to plan this, then I'd be all right, but.
Right, and I know we shifted, um, so they used to do some fundraising. They used to help offset like cost of like the pet band trips to state and such. Uh, but we, I believe, taken over the band portion, paying for the band portion. Uh, if they want to go, but I don't believe they've done. Much for fundraising. Uh, the last couple days, so. So I, like, we would fall more on individuals, I don't think.
And there's also a wide range of how many may be going, how many.
Yeah.
That's, that's the.
Which makes it make you.
But they did say it was like four to six hundred bucks per person, so their. My understanding is that they're paying for it themselves.
Right, at five hundred to six fifty depending.
That's why I just say.
Yeah, I'm not supposed to go, I think it's a great idea and I think Mr. East will just nice start with everything. I just want to make sure we completely understand what we're saying yes to.
Well, my understanding is that we're saying yes to allowing them to go, but not saying yes to financing any of it.
Correct.
And if they wanted to finance it, they could come back.
And I suppose if they didn't have the interest, then obviously.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, yep, just double checking the exact what we're guessing.
It is sometimes a piece of like.
Saying yes.
I don't know.
Why didn't see the hotel in there until just last night, I re-ran, I'm like, oh, it is in there.
Thank you, Brenda.
Any other question to comment on that one? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oath. It's. Number six C, policy five ninety. Question open for discussion.
You doing five ninety?
Yep.
Okay.
Second.
Me.
Any? Marcus? Just a general consensus to where we're at, I, I, I respect the concerns, but at the same time, I think there's common sense to be had here, right? Um, I don't feel that we're discriminating against them of asking for, uh, individuals to be treated differently. It's more a fact that. We're looking to not have them participating in. Other sports, right? That's my concern. And I think as, um, knowing our voting public. Believe with. Hundred percent certainty, a majority would be. Entirely in favor of common sense to ensure that it's not. We're on the, we're, we're against that happening and protecting girls from of all ages. That's the, that's the concern. Yeah. Um, although. Although I agree with, with everything, I know we've had a lot of really good discussion, um, in the recession and stuff like that, I do think that. Um, where I'm at right now is that the. This policy, um, again. Albeit from a personal standpoint, I think that we are. I think we're in the process of putting a very small room ahead of. The entire district population, and I think we're rushing ourselves into something that is. Likely, highly likely, highly likely to get us into a lot of trouble. Think that, I think it's something that we. As a group, I think this is something that we need to discuss further, I'd be, I'd be more in, I'd be more in favor of tableing this for now. And having more discussion on it before we push it through. I think two cents.
Yeah, well. I start with the oath we took that we have to uphold the laws of. Better laws and state laws, personal belief system as a piece of that. My opinion, so regardless of what my beliefs are, I. Feel that again, we are opening ourselves up to. Not using fiscal sensibility with, first of all, our district funds for lawsuits that are for sure going to happen. And I feel like the rules of the Minnesota State High School League are pretty clear that. There's a very strong. All inclusive threat there. Um, and writing a policy that lies in face of that is going to hurt our student, students and their activities. Um. Whether I, my personal belief system aligns with this or not, I, I just can't vote yes to that right now.
Well, I think after hours of discussion, we are not taking this lightly. But I will say this fiscal or not, you cannot pay someone to kill from the injury that could be life threatening. And so I feel like our first, um, call is to protect our students. And they're more important than legal, anything. So if it were my child that got injured or. God forbid killed. None of this would make the difference. As far as money or litigation, and so I feel like. That a child's safety is more important than what the state says we have to do.
Yeah, um. I guess my thought is lawsuits come from both sides. One is. Protecting young girls from young boys. That's where I fall on. Everybody understands that there's a big debate about. If the state has authority here or if the federal government has authority, because currently the state of Minnesota is suing the federal government. Because of. The basic orders on this topic. And so that gets, will play out itself in court, but we don't have any authority. Outside of our district and we all clearly. You know, believe that. You know, when you're born a boy, you stay a boy and you play more sports if you want. And it's just a common sense thing that. We want to protect girls from and. You know, having a teenage daughter in the district currently. You know, it's a little bit more personal, but even if I didn't. It's clear that. Common sense necessitates unfortunately in our current culture of policy. That protects girls. And we are a, an institution that wants to teach facts and. It's not factually accurate that you can change your gender. So. It's important for us to talk to people. Who are confused about that, to unconfuse them and say, no, you're. A boy will always be a boy, you're gonna stay a boy. Um, and that will help. A young person who is. Confused about that, be less confused, hopefully anyway. Um, so it's a common sense policy that. You know, we all believe. Personally, we should adopt. And. I think to say what you believe personally. It doesn't line up with what you want to do publicly is an inconsistent logical. Fallacy, and I just think let's adopt a policy that's really good, that most people will be like, yeah, that's good, it's about time. So. What do we do now?
Yeah, I guess the last thing I would say is that it's the cart before the horse, just a little bit before you can put. A horse in front of the cart. Be like, I mean, I just think that. It's going to open us up to. And we can, on a case by case, sport by sport, we still have the ability to protect our girls if we feel that there's not a reason why they should not be participating, then. We're thrown into an actual situation, then we still have some control there. So it's to use the slam dunk for someone that wants to sue.
Yeah, but that's not more important than protecting young girls. It's already here, it's not coming, but it's here. So we're making a policy that says, this is what we teach at this district, we teach factual. Information. And. I think. Everybody is okay with that, except. There's a group of people that think. That you can change your gender and you can't, it's just not possible. So let's help people believe the truth about themselves. Rather than be afraid of somebody suing us. Because we don't believe the logical fallacy that they believe. It is a strange phenomenon. And nobody loves to justice, you know, publicly, there's heated on, on either side, but. Your average. Person in our district would be like, this is policy makes sense. Cause everybody is aware of it, right? You know? Debate.
Where's your point on all of this?
Sorry, Kristen.
Yes, I understand.
It's just, we know it's not really a debate issue.
Yes, but again, our job here as school board member is.
Is to protect.
Follow the law of, by the federal government and state. Here's.
I don't think that's our job.
To legislate law, making laws that have to rule the land. I must, that have to rule the land. I, that is a black and white line that I.
Get it, but this is a public office and we do, you know, we do it here.
At underneath the laws of that state and federal government. Now, whether those laws are about to change or not, that is not for us to write that legislation, that is.
No, we don't want to do that.
Where my bottom line is, right? So I'm just saying very clearly that. That is, that is where I am. And that's where I feel like we took that oath, if we can't follow that oath, then we are not sitting at right here.
That's assuming we don't also have an obligation to protect students. But I know you believe that we are.
Other students that need to be protected as well, and there's a way to make it a comfortable place for all students. There's a way to do it. But blanket statements of personal belief are not the place to be writing policy for a public school in the state of Minnesota.
Yeah, see, I don't see it as personal belief, I see it as scientific fact and we each facts. So. Let's help somebody who is confused about that. Like, to use kind of an absurd example, but if I was on the skyscraper with somebody who thought that they were a bird. I wouldn't encourage them to test their theory and jump off, I would actually probably physically hold them and say, not while I'm here. And that's protectionist. But if somebody believes they can be the opposite sex, that's just as. Deceived as somebody that believes that they can be a bird.
Right, and that's.
So let's help them be deceived.
Correct.
So we're protecting girls, but we're also protecting those that are.
That protection is placed in their vibe city by empowering all of us to give them. It's such person should they seek any sort of counseling. The, the line to find that. And that is, if in all of these policies and all of these laws, that is our direct. We are directed as school board members to make sure that if someone has any need for. Any sort of help understanding themselves and direct them to those professionals. I know that isn't the angle that you would want to give that person, I understand.
No, it is, very.
But that's our directive, it's not our directive to tell them what's right and wrong, our directive is to give them the right professional to help them decide in. Inside here, who they are, who they wish to be, it's not our directive to make them that person.
No, but this isn't a right, it's not a moral issue.
And we already spent two, two hours or more on this, so that's why it's here to come to an actual vote and not just be passed through. So I think we all are pretty clear on how we feel about it, so I would be ready to vote on it.
I just want to, um, say one thing, going to the school board members, both, um, both of office is to achieve the vision. It's a. Okay, to achieve the vision, the board establishes a structure and creates an environment designed to ensure all students. The opportunity to attain their maximum potential through a sound organizational framework. That's all students, that's the girls as well. Um, and then at the end, I swear or affirm that I will support the constitution of the United States and of this state. And then I will discharge faithfully the duties of the office of school board member of independent school district number. Six ninety to the best of my judgment and ability. And I think that's what we're all trying to do, even though it may vary. So just as we should respect, um, each other's views. Um, you should also respect all students and I think in our school, we need to. Um, teach our children to respect all children, no matter what their identity is. And if it started there to begin with, we wouldn't have this discussion. On the sports issue, sports were made for, we fought for freedom. Through our constitutions to allow women to have sports, and now what are we doing, we're backtracking on it. We're saying women, you don't count, we're, we're pushing you down again, well, now we're back to square zero, so what we're seeing is there's a reason there's male and female sports and. there's male and female sports and um males should not compete with females in sports. There are coed things out there. By all means, do the coed stuff, but let's protect women's sports.
Agreed. But Chris told us we want to be beyond that.
Yeah, and I think that we're probably not the only school that's gonna buck this in Minnesota. Um, I I realize a legal part of it, um. But I also believe that if we make this stand and other schools will also make that stand that the financial part um can be taken care of. Or given back, if you will. I don't know how to say those words, but it will be reimbursed, if you will.
Comments on it? I would just say that common sense runs for even our district and uh Minnesota State High School League, when there's verbiage in there saying that a district has no choice but to allow someone in a locker room of their choosing regardless. I don't think that's common sense. I don't think it's common sense whatsoever. I think it's extremely perverse. Um. So even if this is tabled, even if it's squashed, whatever it is, I would anticipate it coming back. It's not gonna go away.
I hope it doesn't. But right now, I don't know that we are backing.
So what are we voting on now? This is the second reading, right? So we can vote if we bring it to a third reading and we can still discuss further and maybe tweak it in a way that it needs to be tweaked. Is that accurate to say? We can pass it here, but then wait till the, I mean, doesn't become policy till the third reading. Is that right?
Mostly correct, yes. Uh, yeah, essentially it's yes or no. If it continues and if it's a no, it just goes back to the policy we presented back up, starts back to the first reading.
Pass the second reading, as would be, I would recommend, and then and then we can either vote yes or no and we bring it to the third meeting rather than going back and rehashing the hours that we've already spent discussing this. Seems.
So this vote would be to either squash it, start over, or if it if it hits more than three votes, then it comes back for a third. And if a person votes yes, it means they want to push it through with it. Everybody ready?
Yeah.
Is this the first of many?
All those in favor of policy five ninety, please say aye. Number sixty, policy six ninety. Uh, this is one we, on the intelligent design, we also discussed at a work session. Talked a lot about the fact that this policy in and of itself should not be a policy by itself. There's other conversations that can be had on just teaching and cultures and different things like that, but I will entertain a motion to open for discussion. Cindy? Cindy?
Um, well, I again, this the science standards of the state are pretty clear. So this intelligent design isn't specifically fit in there. Um, I think after our conversations the other night, there's a place. We want our children to be critical thinkers. So if we in their entire education, they're always going to feed them one, one thing, they're missing a lot of potential information. Intelligent design is one other explanation. I think there are a lot of cultural cultures in our district themselves that have some pretty different views on where the world may have come from. So there may be a way to teach whether it's not a science class, maybe it's a philosophy class, maybe it's a living religions of the world class, maybe it's a something, some way that we can introduce our children to other peoples' ideas of where we all came from. Um, I know when as me myself, as an undergrad in college, I took a class that still in my brain comes out at times of all these different cultures all around the world and their their ideas of where we came from. Does it fit in science, specifically in the science curriculum of the state with its own policy like this? I don't believe so. Would it be potentially integrated into some part of our curriculum?
Well, let's just the list. For for next year, even the social studies standards, not necessarily something specific to world origins, but exploring and educating curriculum based on other beliefs, right? And and this wasn't necessarily a religion policy. It was just a critical thinking, looking at ways to teach our kids, like Cindy's point. We do have a very, for a little town of war, we got a pretty diverse school, you know, right? Student body. So I think it's great that, you know, that we encourage and explore all the avenues and give students something to to ponder. And I don't think there's any problem with that. But I, sorry, I do agree that it it does not fit in the six ninety. We move back, we look at it.
Well, what's the difference? It doesn't fit in that.
Six ninety is standalone policy versus interjecting and
Yeah, yeah, that would be fun. So we all know it's just, it's it's just critical thinking.
And then it goes to D DAP. To where they could give us some good advice or support.
The inclusion six oh four, just what we talked through and what you guys just mentioned now, like instead of it just being intelligent design, it needs to be hey, how can we teach our kids what all these different cultures, all the different aspects?
Yeah.
Intelligent design. It's also, and then also, we have um Native Americans and each band may have their own beliefs on where traditions, you know, where the earth started. As well as
An evolution would remain in science.
It's it's keeping the standard, but also saying, hey, we've got even more. We've got more to add for your critical thinking. So they can choose what they what they want.
Well, you said six oh four is gonna have to be updated anyway within the next so many months, right? Just because it is, it is, according to the Minnesota website, it is going to be part of standalone class, but additional content. All those in favor of policy six ninety, please say aye.
Oh, wait, what are you?
Let's clarify record.
Yes would be moving it forward, no would be caution and you have to bring in for something else. But six oh four is Marcus was talking through.
Yes, I would move it forward, but I'm happy to go back and and still discuss it. That so I could
I think what we're doing, Gus, is we're taking it from standalone and interjecting things that are coming down the pipeline to begin with within six oh four. That mentions and discusses all of state standards and our general education um policies.
My only concern would be then I mean, there is tremendous scientific you know, rigor that points to intelligent design. Like I wouldn't want to take it away from science and just put it with social studies.
Well, then if you can pick these standards here and make it fit, then put it in six oh four with some proof of how it falls into science. And if those are gonna change, then that makes it time to do it. But until then, these are the standards that we're asking teachers that are licensed in Minnesota to teach science by. So if you can take all of this and somewhere right now, figure out how to meld intelligent design into it, then put it in six oh four and bring it back to our work session. Right now, this as a standalone policy is a huge stretch to make it fit into our science standards. And we have teachers that already had concerns about that, right?
Yeah, fair enough. I understand the concerns.
So like Marcus says, if some of the standards, but if some of the, some of the standards are changing, then that would would open the door. Maybe they are, maybe they aren't. We'll have to see, right? If not, they definitely can fall into potentially a different category like philosophy or some other humanities type or history or somewhere where we could I mean, I asked my girls, how many class periods do they remember having evolution teaching? And they could come up with maybe two or three class periods in basic biology. So you're writing a whole policy here for something that doesn't even follow to the standards. It's just a little much. So we're not saying don't bring the idea back, but this policy is standalone is but that's what we're voting on. So if we're gonna leave that as policy by itself, whether you're gonna go back to the drawing board at the policy committee, rehash it, find a new place where it where it fits and then bring it back. And you have the right to vote if you want to, but that's what we're voting for, right?
Yeah, let's do it, but then we'll go back and articulate it.
Any other comments on that? All those in favor of policy six ninety? Six, seven, seven, I wrote over my seven, seven, eight. I just want to highlight really quickly the the body structure that I asked you to include something in there. There's some items in there that already asked the facilities committee in front of the You didn't read theirs. Highly encourage it and please give me some feedback. Well, Damian, on what you guys thoughts are about it.
Um, I have a question. Do we, are we as a district in um on some overall expenses towards up repairs and
That was one of my questions to him to talk to Amanda about about what could be levied for, could be full levy and then what
Because between her report and Kelly's report, it sounds like we have some things that need to happen.
I would say Damian and I will probably have a pretty good update on what the discussion is. We meet, I think we're meeting act number one.
Please tell them both, thank you for bringing children to class.
Yes. So ten and nine, right there. Uh, board member reports, facilities committee, uh, maybe you want me to take this? Uh, we did the kind of our first go around with a small group on the playground. Just there's some playground dollars out there to add some equipment, add some storage, get some more things for the kids to use outside, which is great. Um, so Britta and Patty Hushen, we're gonna be working on some different options there. The other thing that we really, we got some feedback from the teachers, from me and Confer on just student safety. It's on the south end of the building. And I've I've witnessed it, kids coming out the doors, ripping across the road um to go over to the rink. Kelly was looking into and we're gonna be doing uh metal railing across that sidewalk. And then so it kind of blocks them into just that sidewalk. Um, and then Kelly did some work to paint the sidewalk and add a pedestrian crossing sign there. Um, and then I also talked to Nick Marvin over at the rink. So that sidewalk is gonna get connected to the sidewalk by the rink. And then there's gonna be a door on the addition they're putting on the rink on that west side of the little breeze way in between the two rinks um for the kids to go use. So instead of going right, they won't be going down the slippery um tamboni ramp, they'll be going in the door. So hopefully that addresses some of that. And I think Britain, we also thought about having like a pair or a crossing guard over there as well. So trying to avoid that. We also made the crosswalk itself is like thirty feet wide now. So we took out the two parking spots next to it, to the crosswalk, nothing parking. So.
But we um train students to be crosswalk and give community service hours for it.
Good question for Britta.
Yeah, I mean, it'd be kind of cool.
Yeah, we, it's been a good couple of months and I think just with the aquatics piece, that's gonna be an important part. Any questions?
Um, with the playground equipment, you know, not too many people live up north, but wouldn't it be nice if there was something for winter's weight? Like playground equipment for winter flights. Cause they're out there, how many months in the snow? So if there could be, you know, I wonder if it could be directed that way. If it's, if there is anything, it's been a long time for me.
We talked about that too. So in um in the conversation with that, with the teacher group, which they were awesome, giving a lot of good feedback. Where Kelly used to put the snow, we're gonna move it to the south side of the playground. So he'll, all that snow in the back will go to the south side of the playground. So it'll make a sledding hill. And that was one of the topics too of like sheds, getting a shed of getting some sleds and getting some different winter toys. So it's your topic. Like there's, uh, like I said, there's some playground dollars out there, some grant money that we've had laying around for a couple of years that needs to get spent. So and just some positive things going on there. So more to come on that, but it was a good first discussion and we're gonna have them back hopefully. Just talk a little bit more about what we've learned in the last eight years. Finance?
Do you want to take this one too?
Don't you took.
I really have a whole lot to to report on. Then, you know, as far as our our general and food and community end, I mean, there's not a lot of variances where not, wasn't a whole lot to report on. I mean, we're within, we're within percentage points of of where things are at historically. That's really not a lot to to discuss. Something she wants to.
Kudos to you.
Yeah, no, it's the beginning of the year, first month, status just in. So right now it's looking all right. We're paying one percent on both scholarships and revenues for where we've been restored. So.
Sorry to be a bore. Boring when it comes to financials is Yes.
Uh, I never mind future meetings, facilities committee meeting September ninth, uh, work session, I believe that was getting scheduled and is scheduled for the ninth. Uh, finance committee meeting September fifteenth and regular meeting September sixteenth. One thing that you guys might see that's not on here, because you're still trying to figure it out, is we might have a special meeting to do the student handbook. We might be able to get, or hopefully get that approved before this work starts. That's one piece that wasn't on this agenda, but we will give it before it starts. So it would be, it can be
Did we change the work session, you know, just from six fifteen to six thirty?
I think I saw six thirty.
It's six fifteen. Yeah, I sent the email six thirty, but then
Okay, alright.
Percentage creatures is habits.
Fifteen minutes.
I have number ten. And everybody.